Stat.
Good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just in time.
Okay, and is Dean all set, too?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Good evening.
Thank you.
Sorry, we've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session, and we're now reconvening in open session. I have to read a large disclaimer here, so. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, it's Mass. General Law Chapter 30A Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, but members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law is Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. And those have consequently now been extended. The order's been extended by order of the governor until March 31st, 2025, to have meetings remotely. That can be found under Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of any other procedures as it is practical, too. Any members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link. It can be found on the Gil-Montague Regional School District website under School Committee Notices and Agendas for upcoming meetings for tonight's school committee, and you can be in our Zoom audience as well. We are live streaming this at the moment, as well as broadcasting on MCTV, and then a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the district website following the meeting. This is the time we'd like to welcome any visitors who are joining us. This is generally an opportunity for public participation, which is policy BEDH that has been reinstated to hold the public participation remotely. We have not had any requests for people to do that, but we are going to include some people in our business discussion. We know some people are coming to talk about some of the items that are here under business, and we'll invite them to join us for that discussion shortly. If you are in the Zoom audience as just an audience member for this time, could you please keep your camera and your microphone off? That will make it a little bit easier. And then when you're joining us for a business item, then please turn them on. Thank you. Okay, Brian, important events.
So this Thursday evening, students from the music program will be holding a showcase variety show and cake/pie auction as a fundraiser for the music program. I'll read a little bit more on that in my report. There's a Friends of Sheffield movie fundraiser on Saturday, this coming Saturday morning, April 15th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Greenfield Garden Cinema. April vacation, school will be closed from April 17th through the 21st. Friends of Sheffield will meet on Monday, April 24th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Sheffield Teachers' Room. We'll be hosting the district's elementary math night on Wednesday, April 26th, in the Sheffield Cafeteria. Hillcrest will hold its new preschool student open house on Friday, April 28th, from 12:30 to 2:30 p.m. And the Gil-Montague Education Fund will hold its annual gala Saturday evening, April 29th, in the Turners Falls High School Theater at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. And do we have a student representative report this evening, Heather? Okay, then Sina's going to join us.
She just went to chase the dog down from doing something dumb, hang on one second.
It's good that you can delegate.
Hello, sorry, I was chasing after our dogs.
Somebody's got to do it, Sina, thank you.
All right, so let me see what I got here. So last week, I believe it was, we had our student council's spring conference. That was pretty cool. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend because I, the day where we had the threat for our school, and we had to move it from our school to Greenfield High School, which was unfortunate, but you know, it happens, I guess. On a happier note, we had our hairspray performance recently. That was fantastic. It was a really good experience for everybody. People really enjoyed it, great community event. Prom is coming up, May 12th, I believe. Everyone's looking forward to that. The juniors just completed their butter braid fundraiser. There was some, like, just mental treats for everyone to raise some money for the class. We were planning spirit days for the week of Unity Day. I don't have the date for that exactly, but I do have the spirit days we're planning, which are very interesting this year. Let's see what we got. So the Monday is going to be Music Monday, where you dress as your number one artist on Spotify. That'll be fun to see what people do for that. Tuesday is Teacher Tuesday, where you can dress like your favorite teacher. Wednesday is White Lie Day, so you wear like a white t-shirt, and you write like a lie about yourself on it. It's like if you're very tall, you can't, like, I'm short, or something like that. Thursday is Salad Dressing Day. So basically, each grade got assigned a different dressing. For example, I think the juniors got assigned a ranch, and so we're going to dress kind of like Western, you know. I think one of the grades got, like, blue cheese, they're going to dress in blue. I think there was an Italian, but I'm not really sure of the exact dressings, but I'm sure that will be very interesting. Friday is our normal blue and white day. I'm assuming we'll have a pep rally that day as well. Yeah, and that Unity Day, I'm sure we'll also have our normal variety show. Yeah, talent show sort of thing. That'll be great. And let me see if I have anything else. I guess besides that, we have to start thinking about student council elections that are coming up, but that we have a little bit of time for that. Yeah, that's all I have.
Unity Day is generally in May, am I correct remembering that?
I believe so. I don't have the date with me right now, but I will get that for our next meeting.
Oh, thank you so much.
Of course.
Thanks for everything, Sina. Okay, Brian, the rest of you report, if you could, please.
As Sina mentioned, I also wanted to take a moment to congratulate the high school and middle school performers, as well as the crew. Congratulations and thank you to musical director Kimberly Rose, and to the student performers, the stage crew, and to the many parents and members of the community who volunteered for their exceptional work in the school production of the musical Hairspray. Attendance at the shows was excellent, and the total money raised from gate receipts was nearly $10,000. And that's all money that will be used for future productions.
Heather?
I just want to chime in, but you know, I'm a little biased, Sina was in it. But not really, because she's been in it since sixth grade, so she's a junior now. But they're always great, but there was just something about the energy of this show that was just phenomenal. Every person in the audience had a blast. The kids clearly had a blast. It was just, it was exceptional. And I just wanted to note that, just everybody pulled together and created something really special. It was really fun.
Yeah, it was really cool.
Yes, and if I could add a little bit, too, at the same time. I mean, people that I talked to were just amazed. Not that they don't always do great performances, but the combination of the singing and the choreography. And I think what I heard a lot was the number of students that were involved. I think that was wonderful. The ability to pick a musical that allows for many, many students to have a part in their own way, I think, is just essential. And I really, everybody needs to be given kudos for that. I think it was really extremely well chosen and done.
We actually had almost 60 students in total participate in the show. It was actually really cool. We had a lot of younger students in the middle school join, which was really exciting. Also, we had our cast party this weekend, which the music boosters people so nicely put together for us. And at that party, we announced our musicals for next year. So we're doing two musicals next year. We're doing a middle school musical in the fall, which is going to be Annie Junior. So that'll be really great. And so that's going to be mainly just for the middle schoolers to get their big roles. The high schoolers can be in the background, that's about it. And then for the normal, like, timed spring musical, that'll be High School, and we're going to do Chicago. So that's going to be really fun. And that's going to be the same thing, where it's like the high schoolers will get all the main roles, and the middle schoolers can just kind of stand in the back. And then everyone gets like their chance to, you know, fill the roles of them and give everyone a great opportunities. And I'm really excited. It seems super cool, two musicals.
Thank you, sounds like a great plan.
And Chicago is the teen version, by the way.
Yes. Wondering.
We just watched it this week, and it's not going to be like that, right?
Yes, no.
That I was kind of wondering, thank you for clearing that up. Thanks. All right, thank you. Go ahead, Brian, we'll let you talk.
I wanted to invite everybody to join folks on Wednesday, April 26th, in the Sheffield Cafeteria, where they'll be hosting the district elementary mathematics night. We'll go from 6:00 to 7:30, and snacks will be provided. All families from Sheffield, Hillcrest, and Gil are invited to join us for a night of math games, math events, and maybe even have a chance to win some prizes. I wanted to say thank you and congratulations to Jean Powers for securing our third approved Innovation Pathways designation at Turners Falls High School. Environmental and life sciences will be added and join advanced manufacturing and healthcare and social assistance. So thank you, Jean, and to her team at the high school for creating this educational pathway for our students. And I had mentioned the variety show, which will take place this Thursday night. It's a fundraiser for the music program. Admission is $5, and Alyssa Camo, our music director, encourages folks to bring some additional cash so that you can enter the auction for some wonderful cakes and pies. And the next tentative date for school committee to meet with students will be on Friday, May 5th, at 9:10 a.m. Some school committee members did also meet with students this past Friday. This might be an opportunity, if anybody wanted to share anything from the meeting, but that's it for the superintendent's report.
Okay, thanks. Heather, did you want to say anything about the meeting with students, or John?
Yeah, we. We're out there asking. You're just putting it to the kids on what they think could help. Well, there are only two kids showed up this time because the juniors had something to do, and they've been a big part of our, a part of the group in the past. But anyway, we asked about how we could get more participation in breakfast and lunch, and there were some interesting ideas. A couple notable things are that the fresh fruit and vegetables are actually a huge hit. Not only are they great to see online and social media is a good, cool thing, but the kids are actually really enjoying it. Oh, Sina has something to chat about, of course. I just, it just reminded me, I wanted to give a shout out to the kitchen people because they have been, like, really stepping it up lately. Like, I remember last year, there was like a little bit of struggling coming back from like the pandemic and working out all the food sourcing and everything. But lately, it's been really great. Like, almost every single day, they have, like, fresh fruit and fresh vegetables, and they have the full salad bar up and running now with different things in there. They're always experimenting with new things now. The lunches, there's always two hot lunch options. It's fantastic. And there's like, I don't know, other salads and like other grinders or something. I don't know, it's great. They're doing a really good job, and they deserve recognition.
Thank you.
Yeah. The breakfast, though, I will say, is a little bit questionable. It's very unhealthy, and so I think that is something that would increase participation. Almost every single day, the main breakfast thing is either donuts or junk cereal. So like cinnamon toast crunch, and that's the only thing offered usually. There is like oranges and apples, which are there, which is great. But then sometimes the fresh fruit, too. But that is something to consider, I think. But the lunches are doing really, they've gotten amazing, like, so proud of them. Great job, everyone.
Thank you.
She talks as much as I do. That's a good, that's a good segue into a couple things that the students did note was that, yes, we have nutritional rules that we have to abide by. And part of that is the children, the students have to take each of the options. And so there's a lot of things that the kids don't want but are forced to take, so that results in a lot of food waste. I understand that we have a law. I just don't know how we can manipulate it in a way so that we're not throwing out so much. Grab it and then have a little table immediately to drop it off and say, here, I'm donating this because they don't want it, and someone else can go up and grab it for free or something. Oh, you do have that? Oh, never mind, I guess they already have that. But there's still a ton of food waste, she said. And yeah, improving options. And so I've gotten two stories here. One of the students said that when they grab a breakfast, they have to eat it in the hall because teachers won't let them eat it in the classroom. And I think that could potentially be some teachers because Sina said that she has been able to eat it in the room. So that might be something we can just consider to just make sure that the kids do have somewhere to eat because it's a little awkward to just kind of stand there and mow down a breakfast. So I think those are the two main things. I had, John?
I was just saying, why do they have to stand at breakfast instead of at lunch they sit? But why can't they sit at breakfast?
There's just a cart at the front door where they can grab something. And so like at the elementary schools, they can eat it in the room, but I'm just hearing that potentially that might not be across the board at the middle and high school. I don't know that that's true, but that's just something to double check.
And John, that may have also been something that we, if I remember correctly, that was changed when the pandemic occurred because we needed to spread students out. And so it may be time to reassess and reevaluate that now for high school kids because middle school students get the cafeteria in the morning.
Okay. And I asked the question about Six Town, and if I recall correctly, did the kids say that it kind of seemed, it got, it broke down into, well, my school is good because of this? And are yours, you know, like the pioneer kids were talking about the high points of their school, and the Turners Falls kids were talking about the high points of their school? Was that the report that I got correctly?
Yeah, that was part of it. I mean, you know, they, it was a one-off kind of thing. Well, I guess two, because they visited opposite schools. But yeah, they, they were a little bit of puffing up the chest, but also a little bit of saying that we have this, that would be cool. I mean, you guys have this that we don't, that would be cool if we did. I mean, it was just, you know, a regular chatting about what there is and what there isn't. A little bit of school pride and a little bit of wish list stuff. So yeah, it was fairly insightful.
And it always is really helpful to meet with the students. They're, you know, they're really candid with us, and they really express their ideas so well that it's always helpful to have those discussions. And even if it's something we can't necessarily make a huge change about, it's good to try to get thinking about it and get their opinions on things. I think it's always great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Business and operations report, Joanne.
I don't have anything to report. And in that, we've just been working on the MSBA, and so that's in business.
Right, right. And we will just deal with those votes when we get there and also accepting the audit. So thank you.
Okay.
Next item, then, school committee reports. The warrant subcommittee approval needs to be a vote, and if it's acceptable, we can vote the two warrants in one motion. The first is fiscal year 23 accounts payable, that means paying our bills. The first warrant is number 3341, dated 4/12/2023, in the amount of $315,055.59. The second is also a fiscal year 23 AP warrant. It's numbered 3342, dated 4/12/2023, in the amount of $20,830.70. I'll entertain a motion to approve those together. Heather, thank you.
Well, seconded.
And Bill seconded, and we'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And me, yes, thank you. Moving on to the business portion, our first item under the business portion is approving the naming of the facilities. It's policy FF for the high school pool. And I think we're getting some people joining us for that. If Tina, if you could let everyone in, that'd be great.
Adam? Are you able to join?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thanks, Adam.
Great, yes, Adam Graves is joining us. I think Chris Pennardi was also planning to join us this evening.
Yes, I think, I just think that, Chris, you don't have a video, right? But you're still, you're around.
Yes, folks, I'm here. I'm traveling this week, and my work laptop doesn't have video, but I'm able to join with audio.
Okay, but I just wanted to be sure, thank you. And Kimberly O'Brien, are you also with us for the pool naming?
I am here, yep, if you can hear me. I'm on video, I don't know if you can see me or not.
Yes, yep, it's good.
Okay.
And I think, I think somebody else was in earlier, perhaps.
Yes, I am here, Jennifer Yankowski, for the pool naming. I can't get my video to play either, so I'm sorry.
That's okay, we can, we can just have you speak when you do. And do I see Karen Green here for the same reason?
Yes.
Thank you, wonderful, welcome. So we had received a proposal from Mr. Pennardi, which I will pull out here. And his proposal then went to the high school so that the high school could consider it at their school council, and they came out in favor of it as well. And the request was, would you like to state it, Chris?
Sorry about that, I'm sure. So I go back to the early days of swimming program with Coach Snap. He developed the program starting as a swimming club and developed it into a championship team for a number of years before and after I was there. And I thought, I thought it was, I thought it would be nice to recognize Mr. Snapper's work, both in and out of the school district. And by that, I mean as a coach and also as a teacher. For those of you that don't know, he was certainly a fantastic swimming coach, but he was also an excellent teacher. And I think everybody that had him would remember him as a gentleman, consummate professional, treated everyone with respect and expected respect in the same. So I thought it would be fitting, while he's still with us, to appreciate the fact that, you know, he donated a good portion of his life to the kids of our district.
Thank you. Would other people like to weigh in as well? If you wanted to just raise your hand or something, then I'll, I think I see Kimberly first, thank you.
Great, thank you. So Kimberly O'Brien and Turners Falls High School, class of 1988. My former classmates remind me that we're supposed to have another reunion this year. Thirty, 35. Chris, what he put in the letter, what he just said, it's, it just captures it beautifully. I would just say at the basic core, Coach Snap and Mr. Snap, because I also had him for English class, is just a tremendous human being. He really was just, we are so lucky to have him both as a teacher and a coach. You know, he cared about the individual person. And so then to have someone like that, especially swim team, which swimming is different than, than some competitive sports. I mean, they're all unique, but you know, we were, we were seven through 12, and boys and girls in the same pool at the same time, on the bus, going to swim meets. He was just, you know, he kept us all straight and was, taught us really to, you know, respect each other and respect ourselves. And people, I just, swimming was a huge part of my life, and I was just, it was such an honor and privilege to have him as a coach. So I would say that, you know, naming something, part of a school building, it shouldn't be taken lightly. And, you know, Coach Snap really does truly embody some amazing core values that I think, you know, it's just fitting, very fitting to, to, for others to remember him and what kind of coach he was. So, so thank you for the consideration, and I'll let others go.
Thank you. Yes, I see a hand. Karen?
Hi, Karen Green. I graduated from Turners in '76, and my sophomore class was the first, was the first year we were in the new high school. I had Mr. Snap for two years of English. And when we came to the new high school with the new pool, he was very excited at the opportunity of having a swim team there. I coached on the swim team from '85, '85 to 2008, and he was a wonderful mentor those first few years. We also were swim officials together for many years, and he had a very gentleness about him on the pool deck. Anybody who got disqualified was never meant to, he never made them feel bad about themselves, always was very encouraging to whatever mistakes they made. And he was a wonderful, well, he still is, probably still is a wonderful person, even though he's not around here anymore. But I think it would be very fitting to name the pool in his honor.
Thank you. Adam?
Hey, everybody. Adam Graves, current athletic director here at the high school, as well as a former student alumna. And I actually had Mr. Snap in class, I think when I was in middle school. But good evening, everyone. I am speaking tonight to give my full support for the naming of the TFHS pool in honor of Coach Wesley Snap. Coach Snap influenced the lives of many swimmers and built a swim program here at Turners Falls High School. His time, energy, and dedication to the program deserves to be recognized. Not only was he a coach here, he was also an educator in the building who added impact on many young lives. I firmly believe that anytime we can connect the past of Turners Falls High School to the current students, it is a positive influence in our school community. Again, I give my full support for this endeavor, and thank you to everyone for taking the time to see this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Jennifer Yankowski, did you wish to say something?
I did, I, hi. I was a class of 2001. I didn't actually swim for Mr. Snap. He had retired from coaching at that point. I did have him in class, and he was an official on the pool deck at a lot of our high school meets. You got your school schedule, and you saw that you were in Mr. Snap's class, and it was like, you felt like really important. He made everybody feel like they were important, whether you were swimming at a meet, in the grocery store, or in his class. He just had a way about him in this. Even today, I coached a swim team in Amherst for 15 years, and coaches would be like, where are you from? I'm from Turners. And they'd be like, oh, Mr. Snap, I remember Mr. Snap. So his, his legacy carried on pretty far from Turner. So I agree, this would be a huge honor for him. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wanted to speak on this topic? I think those are the members that I knew wanted to. I just have a question for Chris, if you're still with us, Chris Pennardi?
Yes, I am.
Okay, hi. Just in terms of the exact, are we thinking Wes Snap, Wesley Snap? What are you thinking about the exact name?
Yeah, so I hadn't really planned that far ahead, honestly. Mr. Snap is still alive, in case you all don't know that. He's living in Florida. I've talked to his sons for Christmas present. He was alerted to the fact that he'd been nominated. He respectfully said, whether I win or not, it's an honor, and I really don't deserve it. So Mr. Snap is Mr. Snap. I personally would like to leave it up to either Mr. Snap or his sons to decide how it wants to be memorialized. I think that's, you know, that's the way I'd like to see it done. But it's, you know, it's your all choice. I'm ecstatic that you decided to take it under consideration. So whatever you decide is good with me. But were it me, I would leave it up to Coach Snap and his family.
Okay, thank you. Any of the members of the committee have other theories, or shall we put it to a vote? And if so, we could word it that Mr. Snap and/or his family will let us know the preferred name that they'd like it, like used. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve naming the high school pool after Mr. Wes Snap.
I'll move that.
Bill, thank you.
Seconded.
And Heather?
Yep, I just want to make that clear because I know it's hard for people listening to know always.
So we have a motion, we have a second, and any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll take a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John? Christina?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it carried unanimously. Thank you all for attending. We do appreciate that input, and we will. Chris, would you like to check with his family? How would you, before we do it?
Yeah, I can absolutely check with Brian and Mr. Snap. And at some point, I'll just connect you guys so you can work out the details. But I thank you all very much.
And thank you all for coming and speaking with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your initiative.
Thank you, good night, appreciate it.
Good night. Okay, the next item of Okay, the next item of business is to approve the elementary school statement of interest. And we have that in our packet as well as a really long vote language, which I'll be glad to read in a moment. Anything you'd like to add before I do that, Joanne?
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay, there are a lot of documents in our um, packet this evening. There's a a packet that explains about um. That information, all the information that's included in the proposal as. We mentioned at a previous meeting, it's really cumbersome. Fortunately, it's. It's sent electronically. The mail would be pretty expensive to send the packet. Um, and we need particular language that's required by the mass building authority. And so therefore I will read. Uh, the whole thing, I believe, and then we will consider that the motion when somebody makes it. The required language is as follows. Resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Prior to the SOI, which is Statement of Interest. Submission closing date, the school committee of Gil Montague. Regional School District, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances. Has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The Statement of Interest Form dated April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. For the Sheffield Elementary School located at thirty-five to forty-three Crocker Avenue, Turners Falls, Massachusetts, zero-one-three-seven-six. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application. May be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. And then it, you have to choose from designated priorities. Priority two is overcrowding. The principal displaced for related service providers. And has requested modular buildings to add space. Some teachers share classroom space or teach in non-traditional space such as the stage. There is an inability to add a needed preschool classroom due to lack of physical space, et cetera. Priority five, school facility systems. The two buildings and that's referring to the Hillcrest Building as well as the Sheffield Building, which this um. Would replace. The two buildings have twenty-plus-year-old roofs, some wood-framed windows, energy and efficient doors and aging boilers. Priority seven, obsolete buildings. Part of one school is not handicapped accessible. Stages are used for classroom space and walls have been constructed to provide more classroom space. One building doesn't have a separate gymnasium, library or music room. The buildings have obsolete security in common areas. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority is in in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Joanne, do I need to read the documents that will be attached or not?
No.
Okay, that is the statement as it will be um, recorded when we have a motion.
We have a motion.
Bill, thank you.
And a second.
And a second, Heather. Um, any other discussion before we vote? I know we've spoken about it a couple of times, but people might have other things. Brian?
I just wanted to um, say some. Offer some notes of appreciation. Tina Mahaney. Sarah Burstein and and Carrie Heath Heathwaite uh, make great contributions to this. As you can see, if you look through the document, um, the information provided by Heath Cummings was really extensive. In helping us to be able to understand the. The history and materials and and um, systems of each of the facilities because they had to be included. Um, also to Diane Ellis um, for helping us to understand the impact that the both the overcrowding at the Hillcrest and Sheffield Buildings. Have on uh, service provision. And then uh, the two big thank yous to um, Jean Powers and Joanne Blyer, who did an enormous amount of writing on this. Uh, Jean Powers, working with the elementary principals. Really did a phenomenal job of putting together the educational plan that will be submitted. And Joanne did an exceptional job of of drafting uh, the bulk of this document. So I just wanted to say thank you for everybody. To everybody for their collaboration and their hard work in building this.
Thank you. And this is again, it's just an initial submission of interest and then we have to see if it's approved and then where it goes from there. Any other discussion? Christina?
Yeah, can I um, I mean, first I'll just chime in um. To emphasize what Brian said, reading through the um. Statement of interest is very, a very compelling read. And um. Seems like this is an urgent need. I'll I'll leave it at that, but um, it it's clear that a lot of people put a lot of work into putting this together. And I appreciate the thoroughness of the report, although I am not, I guess, the intended audience for it. Um, but my my question is more um. Wanting to make sure I'm clear personally on what it is that we're voting on. The language. Of the vote is all focused on um, outlining the problems and then submitting the um. The Statement of Interest. I know we have also talked about the. The thoughts of the intended solution, which there is a lot of also in a separate extensive document. On that, which is part of the um, attached, it's one of the listed. Detachments here, the education plan. But none of the language around the proposed solution is in what we're voting on tonight. So right now, we're just basically voting to say, yes, all of these things are problems. The priorities listed. Um, but we're not voting on what the proposed solution is. Do I have a accurate understanding of what we're voting on tonight?
Yes.
Yes, so this is. Basically, we're submitting this to MSBA, asking them to allow us into the program. And then once we're invited into the program, then we would have a feasibility study done on the buildings. And that, then we would go through those next steps of getting architectural drawings and deciding what the solution would look like. But first, we have to get into the program. And so that's what all of this work was for. And hopefully, we can get in the first year, but. You know, it's, it's not always that easy.
Uh, and subsequently, one of the other subsequent steps is that um, there would be a subcommittee. Put together a school building committee, which would be another um. Another committee subject to open meeting law, who would actually oversee subsequent stages of the project as well.
Yes, the uh, building authority has a very proscribed way of writing um. Your Statement of Interest vote. So that's why um, it was taken from what they require. But you're right, it doesn't exactly say what we're hoping to do eventually, Christine. I mean, good point. You know, it is that will come later, but this is at least letting them consider whether they will consider our ideas. Anyone else? Okay, in that case, we'll have a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And me, yes. And we needed, I looked at the documents and we needed a, no, that's the other one. We need a different vote. We're all set. That's unanimous and so it can be submitted on Friday. Is that correct?
We actually, we want to try to submit it tomorrow. If you're, if you're able to come up, we just need to make sure that everything checks out.
Yeah. Really come in and sign.
If we hit any, any type of tech snags or issues, it gives us another twenty-four to forty-eight hours to work with MSBA to sort sort through anything that we might hit as a problem.
That's a good idea.
Once it's submitted, then we'll all get emails. You'll get an email, Jane, saying you need to sign this. And Brian will get emails saying he needs to sign. But that's after we submit.
Okay, so I will come in tomorrow and sign to submit it.
Mm-hmm.
And then they will notify us later that I sign again?
No, you're saying, go ahead and submit by this vote. You're saying to submit it.
Okay.
So we'll submit, then you'll get an email saying. You need to sign off on it.
Okay. Very good. In that case, we have a unanimous vote, so we are all set and you may submit it. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is C. Um, we need to accept the Melanson Financial Audit Results and this is a vote just to accept their information that they've done for us. Melanson is a company that has done our audits for a long time and as we mentioned last time. Um, Joanne and her staff have been working really hard to make sure that. There are no findings, they call them, or issues with things that need to be worked out in the financial area. And we've uh, we've come really a long way with Joanne uh, working on that over the years. So I will entertain a motion to accept the Melanson Financial Audit Results.
Um, I make a motion.
Okay, Heather, thank you.
Well, seconded.
And Bill, second. Any other questions or discussions about that? Heather?
Yeah, I just, I know you mentioned it, but I don't know if people realize um, I've been on the school committee for going on eight years. And we used to have a number of, um, what are they called? Findings?
Findings.
Yeah, findings um, every year and they are not. Simple to rectify um, and just getting everything in such terrific order. I think we're, is this our third year that we haven't had any findings? Even if it's a second, however, whatever, it's just amazing. Four, oh, excellent.
See, I.
We're on a roll.
It really, and that is, that really is something to be proud of. Um, thank you, Joanne, and your support and. It's just, it makes it a lot better. Everything's working right in the first place, so. Really well done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I will take a roll call vote to accept the financial audit from Melanson. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And me, yes, thank you. Um. Almost lost it. Um. The next item D is addressing the pandemic learning loss and I'm sure that means Jean is with us. Hi, Jean.
Hi, everyone.
I haven't seen you since this morning. It's been a while.
I know, I know. Um, so tonight, my presentation about pandemic learning loss is gonna look a little bit different. So it was a a couple uh, school committee meetings ago, you know, we were talking a lot about the math and the reading scores. And you know, someone had brought up something about like, you know, that is important and huge, but what else is going on? So I've put together a little celebration of learning. Um, to think about, you know, not only just academic. Things that learning loss that has happened with the pandemic, but also some of the engagement and social emotional components related to pandemic. So. Um, I apologize to anyone out there that I didn't capture all the amazing things that are happening. Um, but this is just a little snippet of things that are going on. So I'll share my screen. Okay, so I'm calling this a celebration of learning. It's actually really fun to put together, so. Uh, we'll start with the elementary schools, then I'll talk about the secondary schools. And again, this is not everything that's happening. Um, but there's lots of amazing things happening in the district. So we've heard a little bit about the Read Across America events at the elementary school. So we had two night events, one at Sheffield, one at Hillcrest and Gilded a Read Across America Day. And again, just, you know, a way to bring community together to to have some guest readers and to share the love for literacy. Um, we had a huge turnout at both of the schools for the evening events. Um, and it was a lot of fun and a lot of time and dedication put together from from staff. So coming up is the elementary math night. Um, we have added math interventionists this year at the elementary school. We have one at each elementary school. And the work they are doing is phenomenal. They are not only taking a course through the math recovery, which I believe I've spoken about. Um, which is a very intense course and they have to get certain number of hours working with students. Um, they are really building both teacher and student expertise in uh, math and this math night event has been uh, their idea. So we were hoping to have it on three fourteen, which would have been Pi Day, so that would have been our theme. Um, but it just ended up that uh, Wednesday, April twenty-sixth was the best day. Um, so we were looking for what is April twenty-sixth and it's actually National Pretzel Day. So that is our math night. Uh, theme pretzels. Um, so if you are able to stop by, we would love to have you. It's gonna be at Sheffield, but it's open to all three of the elementary schools. Uh, Mystery Science. I've talked a little bit about Mystery Science and I have just a couple pictures here, but this has really taken off. So we have uh, Wit and Wisdom, which is our ELA curriculum and Wit and Wisdom also. Addresses some science standards and some social studies standards. Students then have at the elementary level a once-a-week STEM class with a STEM teacher and that's Ms. Neely and she uses STEM scopes. So we looked at what does Wit and Wisdom cover? What does Ms. Neely cover and what's missing from the state standards? And so what we've done is we've created a playbook for Mystery Science and we've used Mystery Science, which is. They give you a mystery. It's usually a quick video that gets students really hooked and excited and then they do things. So you can see. Um, on the left, there was a little, a mystery um, that they were doing in graphing and on the right, they were actually looking at. Um, you know, the strength of different types of houses and and playing around with that. So it's really taken off. Teachers really love it and it's really a great engaging way to uh, bring science into the curriculum. So if you haven't heard, we have book vending machines at each of the elementary schools. And we, I credit uh, Diane Ellis for these. This was her idea. To uh, really build in uh, ways to engage students and positive behavior. Uh, respect, cultural, um, you know, awareness and connecting with their peers. And so. And we have one at each of the schools and each school has really kind of designed its own model of how students earn coins. And so on the, on the left, we have um, the Hillcrest School. And the middle is actually a picture from the recorder, the Greenfield Recorder, where we had our. Launching ceremony in Sheffield in the fall and then the right is the Gill School when we were going and launching that book vending machine. So this has been a huge hit for students. Uh, we students don't pay any money, they earn a coin and they they receive a book, they take it home and it's theirs. Um, we are continuing to build out the books that we have and we offer. We try to, we've tried to mix it up. In the books so that students really are interested in in earning the coins. Um, it's a lot of fun. Um, it's one of my favorite things to do is to fill the book vending machine. Uh, so diverse books collections, this is another big focus of the elementary schools. You know, we've talked a lot about. Some of the culturally responsive components of the work we've been doing this year with our book study. Uh, but all the elementary schools have really dug into this work and Hillcrest has been at the forefront. Um, has created a lending library for families to borrow very diverse books. Um, and grade one students this past week at all school meeting did a whole presentation. Um, they read one of the diverse books and then had made posters about it. Um, and kind of talked about, you know, how do you recognize when something's unfair? So these books. Not only allow students to see themselves and see other cultures and experiences, but also. Often teach a lot of lessons that they can um, expand upon. And then at Sheffield, Ms. Nadeau, the library teacher librarian, has really been working to. Weed out some of the old books in our historical fiction section and our our historical nonfiction and we're looking to. Diversify that more and add more books to that. So we have students get getting more experience and over time, she'll do the same thing at um, Gill and Hillcrest. So this is new, coming soon. Um, so I don't know if you've seen little free libraries around, but we're gonna get one at each of our elementary schools. So this is uh, gonna be outside and we'll have a little plaque with our own charter. So there's actually an app where you can. Find out where there's free little libraries. And so we encourage people to borrow books, leave books. Um, and they'll be outside so that students can access them at any time. And you know, it's like a little sharing library. Um, and we're getting our plaques in bilingual for all the schools. And the coolest thing is that they're in shipment right now and they're heading to the middle school because Mr. Lamore. Has so graciously um, had some of his middle school students, they're gonna put them together. So we ordered kits. And they will, they will use their skills to get them together. So coming soon, stay tuned. Um, this is an amazing opportunity that we've had for a number of years, but um, just to point out that we have Stars residency grants from the Mass Cultural Council. And we have something happening at all three of our elementary schools. So Hillcrest has a dancing together. Um, so this is first grade students. It's a program where they build and strengthen relationships. And Sheffield is doing an inclusion improv. So this is second grade and third grade classes coming together to learn theater skills. It's looking at tolerance and inclusion and Gill is looking at systems and cycles of nature. So you know, really using the. The grounds that um, Gill has access to to really build upon. Science and how there are certain components of nature that are cycles and how does that connect to what students are learning? So very exciting that we have that opportunity. Uh, just wanted to highlight some of our amazing artwork from Ms. Castro Santos. Um, this is, I believe, a fifth grade assignment on the left. And then I think it's second or third um, on the right, but just amazing, beautiful, vibrant artwork that's happening at the elementary level. So a couple of things about the secondary school. Uh, we've talked about the extravaganza that happened on March twenty-second. This was an evening where we celebrated the programs at the high school. It was a very well attended. Um, and many, many teachers spent time developing activities and also laying out examples of student work. Um, it was our second event, um, really looking to target and support, you know, students in middle school in particular, learning more about what the high school has to offer. Um, so you can see from the pictures, there's definitely some engagement. We had some teachers lead some things, and then we also had some students taking the lead. As was mentioned already, I don't think I have to say too much, but we had an amazing theater production of Hairspray. Um, you know, it's really, this program has really grown, and it's really exciting to see the amount of students that took part in this theater production. Um, and sounds like we're gonna have some exciting performances next year as well. The band has continued to grow. I know, Mr., um, Mr. Beck has talked about this, that, you know, in the past three years, uh, we've really exponentially grown. I think we started with maybe twenty students, we have a hundred and something students, so.
Yeah, it went from, sorry to interrupt, but.
Oh, go ahead, thank you.
It's, um, i- in the first year that Alyssa was here, there were eighteen students in the program, and now it's over a hundred and twenty.
Amazing.
That's incredible growth in a really short period of time.
So amazing. And so you heard about some things that are coming up. Um, those are some of their events that are coming up, um, and then the pep band. So, you know, it's just really exciting that, you know, it's beyond the classroom and how we can really engage our students and, and help them find, find something that they love. I'm not sure if you know about this course at the high school, but it's called Connecticut River Valley Environmental History, so it's taught by Mr. Smith. And it is really about, um, trade on the Connecticut River, uh, growth and expansion, um, of cities and towns on the Connecticut River. And one of the things they do is they read this short story about, um, trading. Uh, and they, it's about a boat, and they actually built the boat. So I think it's so amazing because it's really bringing multiple facets into, into the curriculum. And, um, you know, there's a huge demand that this maybe becomes its own course someday, a boat building course, how cool would that be? But just really exciting and really talking and getting students to have a real experience of, of not only just applying their knowledge on, on like classroom-based activities, but like making it a broader experience. So that's that group. And I know, uh, Brian mentioned that we do have a coming soon. We just recently found out that we were awarded a third Innovation Pathways, Environmental and Life Sciences. I'm very excited. Uh, we're really, really engaging students in these pathways and have a lot to offer, and so we're very excited. Um, this is a picture of one of our students in the healthcare and social assistance, um, pathway where they did their CPR first aid training, um, this past fall. So we continue to build this program, and, um, I'm very excited because environmental and life science has been a huge passion of a number of our students and our teachers, and so I think we're gonna have a big draw for that program. And I just wanted to highlight, you know, community service, learning projects, there's something going on all the time within the secondary buildings, whether it's middle school or high school, where students and, uh, teachers are trying to do things to better the greater community, the school, outside the school. And so it's just really a valuable thing to talk about and to highlight for the work that students are doing. And I'm sure you've also heard about our Paris and Rome trip, so talk about learning outside the classroom, um, just an amazing experience. I'm so glad they got to go. I really believe that they really took a lot away from this and got to practice their skills and really learn from one another, and it was a great bonding experience as well. So hopefully you were able to see the article in the Greenfield Recorder recently that highlighted some of the things that the students were able to do while they were there. And we heard too, recently we had, uh, collaboration with other schools in Western Mass for the Student Council Experience. Um, the cool part about this is the majority of students were middle school students, and so it was really about, you know, becoming a leader and, um, not only just being a leader already, but really how do we become a leader? And so the, Ms. Fortin talked about the fact that there was a lot of, uh, collaboration and workshops about how to solve problems, how to, you know, step outside your comfort zone. So it was, it ended up being a really great conference, and I'm so glad that we had so many middle school students involved in this. And that's all I have to highlight, and again, I feel like I could go on and on and on, and there's more things we, we're doing. But, you know, I think really talking about the pandemic learning loss and related to the bigger picture too is really important, and so I appreciate, um, the school committee member who did say that and mention that, because we do look a lot at data. We look at a lot at math and reading, and we make sure that those are the solid skills that students have, but there's so much that goes on in this district. And so, um, hopefully that gave you a little snapshot of what are the amazing things our teachers and students are doing. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Jean, by the way.
You're welcome.
Thank you again. It's really wonderful. That was, that was great.
Yes, thank you so much. And to your point on pandemic learning loss, so much was lost for kids, and a lot of what you just showed was lost. And so I, I wholeheartedly agree that this gives us a bigger picture on pandemic learning loss, which of course the skills are essential to get up, but also, um, the, the togetherness, the projects, the collaborative learning, these enriching experiences, also huge part of the pandemic learning loss and the response. So thank you so much for putting that together.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And again, thank you, thank you all for, you know, your, all your feedback.
John?
Yeah, just, you know, boat building and, uh, you know, the trips and, um, uh, th- those are just all the things that the attractors to, to school, the kid, and band. That's so great with band, tho- that's what keeps kids coming back and into school, so that, that's, it's really nice to see those programs. And, and the great teachers that are running these things. I mean, just the, I have to say, just the staff in this little school district at all levels, they're heartbreakingly good is how I would put it, from top to bottom, from what I've seen.
I agree.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, that was wonderful. Um, okay, we are going to, uh, skip over item E. We're going to discuss the superintendent's contract at our next meeting. And so that will be added to the list to come. Um, item F, we have open Montague School Committee seats. Um, there is a town election coming up in May in both towns, but at this moment, we also have three vacancies. Uh, Brooke is, Brooke, uh, is unable to continue as a school committee member. Uh, she notified me earlier today. And, um, I'm sorry to hear that, but, um, sometimes we're not in, you know, in control of everything, so things change. But we appreciated Brooke Martino being with us and Brooke Billings. I'm sorry she goes by now. Um, um, so thank her, and there are openings, uh, if people are wanting to, uh, volunteer for the openings. The way it's worded, "Wor summon to volunteer," it really only lasts till the next election, which is in May in any event. But certainly there will be positions there that people have taken out papers for, and there also will probably be some positions for people who would like to be write-ins to join us on the committee, and we're always looking for, um, people in the community that would like to join us. Um, the last item under business is we have two policies we've included in your packet this evening. The first one is policy BDA, and it's a policy that regulates organization, uh, reorganization of the school committee, um, annually after election. And the way that we have written our policy quite a few years ago, looks like two thousand and three, uh, was that once the regional elections have been held in the two towns of Gill and Montague, that the school committee will organ- reorganize within seventy-two hours and elect officers at that time. Um, within the last couple of years, voting in the towns has become, uh, slightly different in that people can vote at absentee ballot, people can come in to vote at times other than on the actual day of voting. So tallying the information has been a little more complicated. Also, when there are openings that people have written in someone for, the write-ins have to be tallied in both towns and coordinated from the two towns. And it has become more and more difficult for that information to be organized and for the new members who have been elected to be sworn in, in that short amount of time, in the seventy-two hours. My goal was to go online and look at, in the Mass Association of School Committees, um, website, the state group has a sample reference policy manual. I was going to review how their policy is stated. I believe most districts, especially if it's a town where there's only an election in one town, um, reorganize at the next official meeting, whenever that happens to be. And so because of the complications that we've encountered, it seems to make sense. I was not able to get in and look at, um, the policy manual suggestion of how the policy could be worded, because the system at MASC was hacked, and they are having to put it all together bit by bit. So it hasn't been available at least more than a week. And I believe when we asked them, it had been hacked at least a week before that, so it was still being reorganized when I last checked earlier this week, and I was not able to see that policy. So in the meantime, we have, are, are hoping to access a policy that allows for suspension of policies. And with that, if it's acceptable, if we vote to suspend the policy on annual organization for the time being until, um, after the election, and, and decide that it will be at our next regular meeting, if that's part of it, we can suspend the policy. With the only understanding is that we have to have a vote of two-thirds of the members present at the meeting that agree to it. And then, once that's done, we must review at the next school, scheduled school committee meeting, um, what we've done in suspending the policy. That's all that the policy to suspend contains, and it's based on, um, the MASC recommendation, when you need to suspend a policy. So our hope is tonight that we can suspend the policy for annual organization, wanting to change it from within seventy-two hours to at the next scheduled regular school committee meeting that follows the elections. That would be our suggestion. Any thoughts on that?
Seems prudent?
It, it does seem to make sense. The last two years, it was very complicated. I, I unfortunately had to spend a lot of time making the two town clerks' jobs harder by continuing to ask them if the votes were tallied, and if people could get sworn in as soon as possible. And with people's other commitments, that's also tricky, so, um, we're hoping to do that at the moment. Any other thoughts on that? Bill?
Are there any reasons not to do this? Are there any time-sensitive things that would need to be voted on? I'm guessing no, and if not, then.
When I looked into the issues, um, that are allowed for in our original policy, the, it becomes an issue if the chair and the vice chair are not running for election, and there is no one in the interim before reorganization has happened. They have not been reelected because they chose not to run or any other reason. That becomes complicated, but, um, at this point, that doesn't look like that will be the issue. So we will still have the standing, uh, officers, and as far as I'm aware, until that next meeting, if there was a need for an emergency meeting, I think the school committee members, until things have been reorganized, would still be, um, active. Bill, I think I saw your hand.
No, I was just, uh, unmuting in case I wanted to.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Anyone else have any thoughts about that? John?
I, I don't think I really understand the issue. But I don't want to block the passage, so if I abstain, I don't know whether that, uh, I, I'm, I'm not, so this is just to suspend our.
So John, the, the, the district policy, um, the district established a policy to hold a, um, what is it, effectively a reorganization meeting that would need to take place? So it created this need for a third meeting in the month of May, and during the pandemic, as we've gone remote, um, and with the declining or, or current membership rate now, that it can be difficult on any evening, potentially to get a quorum to be able to get business done. Most school districts in Massachusetts hold their, um, their reorganization at the, the meeting that follows the election. And, um, so by suspending this policy, like, we don't have enough time to do three readings of the existing policy, which I think is CBD. Uh, is that the reorganization policy?
BDA.
BDA. So if we suspend policy BDA through the use of policy BGF, it gives us the opportunity to avoid, um, having a, a, a third meeting in May that seems to be unnecessary. For the last couple of years, it has been a challenge to get people together, um, for that third meeting because of, of when the elections have been scheduled. So I think that, at this time, it happens on the fifth, fifteenth and sixteenth. Um, and so we would really need to schedule a meeting, you know, by like that Thursday. And we don't know if we'd necessarily be able to have a quorum. So I, I threw it out as a suggestion, because we've been talking about it for, um, during the time that I've been here, that we need to change that policy to be reflective of what other school districts do for the purpose of making it convenient for, uh, school committee members, rather than sticking another meeting in at a time when we're having difficulty keeping members on board.
Thanks, Brian, that, and at, at the annual reorganization, then officers are elected, uh, chair and a vice chair as well, and, um, it's, uh, as I say, our, my goal was to get a policy that we could replace ours with, and it's not available at the moment, because all of that information is not able to be accessed until MASC is able to fix what's been hacked and make it available to us. So in the meantime, we're just suspending the policy, um, so that we can reorganize at our next regular meeting. Okay, any other questions? I know it is complicated. Bill?
Yeah. Why can't we suspend the policy? And, oh, you're looking for specific wording from Mass on that, or?
Well, I thought if, if I had been able to get into the policy manual, the reference manual, it's called, with a sample policy, which is typical, that then we could have done it the way we would have had time. When I started looking, we would have had time to have the three readings of the new policy and substituted it, but it wasn't available, and then I checked the next week and it still wasn't available, and then we realized it wasn't going to happen in a timely manner. So.
It really relates to the time for reconsideration.
Right, and, and I believe that once I can access that information, I will ask you all to consider it a later meeting when we have that available to change our own policy permanently, if that's acceptable to people.
It was certainly my impression over the last couple of years that the seventy-two hour limitation was, um, not helpful. And I, and I can't imagine why you can't go till the next meeting. Of course, if some emergency came up, there should be some kind of, uh, chain of command that takes place, because as soon as the election happens, uh, all officers no longer hold their seat. So you have to, um, establish either a senior member on the committee or the secretary or, or somebody has to chair that first meeting and openly, and open the, uh, whatever it's called, the arena for the, the contest to re-electing Jane to be chair.
Oh, okay, that's what we're thinking. Um, right, the good and bad news is I don't have to run this year, so I guess I'll still be here. Um, but you're right, Bill, I think that's something we should consider when we do, uh, look at a different policy. What would happen if there is a change, um, other than the typical? I think that's good to consider other options, how to have someone available to, uh, set a meeting. Okay. In that case, I will entertain a motion to suspend policy BDA. Okay, in that case, I will entertain a motion to suspend Policy BDA.
I'll move that.
Bill, thank you.
I'll second it.
And Heather seconded. Any other discussion? I will entertain a roll call vote to suspend that policy. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And then the understanding is that we will just reorganize at the next regular meeting. I hadn't really thought, do we need to put that into a vote as well? Might be good. Any thoughts on that?
We have to review this at the next meeting. So perhaps we should put a business item on the agenda for that purpose, following the review.
Right, that sounds great. And that is part of the suspension process. So it will be on the next agenda, and then if we wish, we can make that stipulation. All right, thank you. I, I know Tara's working on getting the minutes in us so that we can approve them, and we appreciate that very much. And she will get those to us as soon as she's able. If their agenda requests, we set the agenda on the Tuesday of the week prior to the next Tuesday meeting. And our next scheduled meetings in are April 25th and May 9th. So those will be when we're meeting again. And I anticipate going forward, we, I expect we will have an executive session at each of those meetings. So the executive session will start at six generally, so people can plan ahead. Any other questions or comments? Okay, in that case, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that too.
Okay, Bill, thank you.
I'll second.
And John seconded. Any discussion? Not seeing any. We'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And me. Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Sorry to hear about Brooke.